Industrial.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting daughter. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dolm.
Here. Well, I have you in invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen.
Quite a few tonight. Mr. Mayor and I like John Clark to make these presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mayor and honorable members of the council. It's my great pleasure to spotlight the 25, 30, and 35-year service awards for employees of the City of Garden Grove. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a distinguished group of individuals celebrating the milestones of 20, or excuse me, 25, 30, and 35 years. Honorees unable to be here tonight are Gaston Castellanos, I think he's up in the crow's nest, Charlie Klein from the Police Department, Brad DeVries from the Fire Department, Brian Egan from the Police Department, Lieutenant Bill Erickson from the Police Department, Manny Flores, Carlos Sosa, Dean Taylor, Michael Thompson, Joe Berejny, I believe all from Public Works, Darryl Halligan from the Police Department, Jeff Harland from Fire, Debbie Mack from Information Services, and Brad Spell from the Fire Department. But we do have a distinguished group who are here with us tonight. The council is pleased to welcome the following 25- to 35-year anniversary honorees, and we would like to ask them to please come forward as I call your name and sort of form an arc there. Bruce Chappelle, Tom Freeman, Randy Garcia, Rory Janoka, Scott Lowe, Naveen Maru, Allison Richard Rounds was here, but he's a paramedic and he was just called out, so that's dedication. Rick Bermudez, Steve Sanders, and Marty Donahue. And I don't think I've missed anybody back there. We'll begin with Tom Freeman. In 1984, Tom started his career with the City of Garden Grove as a maintenance repair worker. As such, he's responsible for all heating, air conditioning, and electrical work in all of the city-run buildings, including all the fire stations. With almost everything electrical, from computers to copiers to lights, Tom's service as an electrician to troubleshoot any problem is indispensable. Tom has two daughters, one granddaughter, and will soon have a grandson just over a week from today, so congratulations, Tom Freeman.
Why don't we do this, when you complete that, Tom, come on up here, and we'll go ahead and start handing these out before we run into real problems.
You gotta come up here now, Tom.
Tom, stay up here.
You just come up here.
Yeah, just stay here, we're gonna have a photo taken.
Still very good.
Who's next?
Our next is Bruce Chappelle. He's been an employee with Public Works Parks Division for 30 years, starting out with the SEDA program way back when. He specifically worked with Facilities Division for the majority of his time here, and also he's a great team player, he's always there to help, whether it's herbicides, restroom cleaning, spray crew. His attendance is near perfect, volunteers to do overtime, friendly to all in Public Works. His only downfall is that like Yogi Bear, if there's a picnic basket or free food available, apparently you have to beware. We might tease him about food and aluminum can collection, but you can depend on Bruce through thick and thin, so Bruce, go ahead and step on up.
Bruce, did you get yours already? You got it already? Okay.
We did.
Okay. Okay, we're just, okay, okay.
Our next anniversary honoree is Captain Randy Garcia. Randy Garcia began with the City of Garden Grove as a paramedic in 1984. For the past 17 years, Randy has served as a captain. Over the years, Randy has successfully coordinated many events for the department, including the Garden Grove Fire Department's 75th anniversary and the biennial Fire Service Day, attracting hundreds to the community event. In his spare time, Randy enjoys sailing and golfing. He is married and has a son who is also a firefighter, paramedic. The city thanks Randy Garcia for 25 years of excellent service to the city and community of Garden Grove. Come on up, Randy. Our next honoree is Rory Janoka. In 1984, Rory became both a resident and an employee of the City of Garden Grove. She started as a records clerk in the Police Department, then moved on to become a record specialist. She became a unique California law enforcement telecommunications system, or CLETS, expert. She returned to us after retirement in 2007 as a part-time record specialist. These days, Rory enjoys more time with her sons Chris and Brian, and grandchildren Dylan, Nicolette, Gillian, and Jenna. The city congratulates Rory on 25 years of invaluable service to the City of Garden Grove. All right, our next 25-year honoree is Scott Lowe. It's good, you guys kind of lined up in the right order, too. Scott Lowe is a senior engineering technician, and he came to Garden Grove with an associate's degree in drafting. He's since gone from drawing plans by hand to computer-aided drafting to GIS mapping and sewer modeling. Beyond his work duties, Scott is very active serving on various committees. As a resident cartoonist and photographer, he's lent his talents to many employee activities. Scott and his wife of 33 years, Grecia, have a daughter named Amy. The city honors Scott for his 25 years of unsurpassed service to the residents of Garden Grove. Now we're in order. Naveen Maru is the next honoree. Naveen was hired as a senior engineering aide in Public Works. In addition to designing and completing capital improvement projects, he researches and obtains outside funding via state, federal, and county governments to pay for these projects, so the city's general fund doesn't have to be used. To date, he has completed more than $30 million of storm drain installation work and $30 million in rehabilitation of a number of major streets. That's all by himself. The city congratulates Naveen for his 25 years of exceptional service to the City of Garden The next honoree is Allison Mills. As a police cadet in 1984, Allison Mills worked as a report writer in records and crime analysis. While she was there, she was named Civilian Employee of the Month. From the Police Department, she moved to the Community Development Department, working in code enforcement, then economic development, and now as the manager of neighborhood improvement. Allison is an animal advocate. She co-founded and is a current board member of the Friends of Lake Forest Animals. She and her husband, another employee, Bob Mills, have two dogs. The city thanks Allison for her steadfast dedication to the City of Garden Grove over the past 25 years. Rumor has it Richard Rounds is back from his call. All right, you get to go to the front of the line. Firefighter Richard Rounds came from the Rio Hondo Academy. Four years after being hired, he was promoted to firefighter, paramedic. He's part of the Apparatus Equipment Committee, responsible for outfitting the new engines. He's also assistant medic coordinator. Richard has represented the Garden Grove Fire Department as a participant in the Orange County Paramedic Advisory Committee. He and his wife give back to their community by participating with several charities. Tonight, the city recognizes Richard Rounds for his courageous service over the past 25 Our next 30-year honoree this evening is Rick Ricardo Bermudez. Rick Bermudez has served over 20 years as part of the SWAT team for the Police Department. He is a prominently recognized court expert in tagging and graffiti. Rick served more than the city. In 1987, he took a three-month leave of absence to serve his country as a member of the United States Marine Corps, serving on Operation Cobra Gold in Thailand and Operation Desert Storm. Rick received the Silver Medal of Courage for heroic action and the Bronze Medal of Merit for exemplary police work. The city honors his courage and commitment to and for the City of Garden Grove over these past 30 years. Thank you, Rick. Our next 30-year honoree is Patricia Hayes. You get to leapfrog. Patricia started her career with the city in 1973 as a part-time lifeguard instructor. In 1979, she was hired as a park maintenance worker and is now a public works supervisor. She is a state-certified chemical application and playground safety inspector. She also coordinates Eagle Scout projects in city parks. Patricia has a longstanding passion for plants and landscaping, appropriate for the Parks Division. She's currently working on her master's degree in landscape architecture from UCLA. The city commends Patricia for her 30 years of commitment and dedication to the community. Our last 30-year honoree tonight is Steve Sanders. Lieutenant Sanders joined the Garden Grove Police Department as a patrol officer in 1979. For 26 years, he's been part of the SWAT team. In 1988, Steve was responsible for the Police Department's first re-accreditation through the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Since then, he has overseen the department's accreditation compliance with over 400 standards. Steve has also received the department's highest award, the Medal of Valor, for his actions in a life-threatening situation. The city honors his abiding dedication and service over the past 30 years. Thank you, Steve. Marty Donahue. Last but best, our last honoree is Marty Donahue, a 35-year honoree. Over the past 35 years, Marty has served in various capacities for the Police Department. He's served as a school resource officer and a member of the Howard Daley's Murder Task Force, for which he received the Medal of Merit. He served on the SWAT team as well, and he currently assists with the department's accreditation team. Marty was named the Orange County Officer of the Year by the National Security Association, as well as the department's Investigator of the Year in both 1984 and 1985. The city honors your 35 years of will and determination to protect and serve the city and the community. So, thank you, Marty.
Yeah, I know, this'll be interesting. I'm not sure.
They're all about the same size. We could maybe do two rows.
Randy, Naveen.
Then you have to kind of shift so that it's balanced. Then you have to kind of, if you could move over to the center so that the center is, how's that? Can you get on?
One, two.
Got it?
One, two. One more. One.
Trying to get Dina.
Oh, we can't see Dina.
Yeah.
It's okay. I'm not starved today. It's okay.
Okay.
Put the middle.
All right. One, two, three. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. If any of you would like to say a word, the podium's there.
First off, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, community. For those on television, first thing I'd like to point out is, if you have an issue or a question, or an idea that you'd like city staff or the mayor or the council to hear, bring it forward at a council meeting. I did that a couple of sessions ago regarding a upcoming solar project for the maintenance facilities operations yard. I got off the plane at Los Angeles International after two weeks of Asia, and I had a phone call from the mayor's secretary, Pamela, I believe was her name, and she said that there would be a meeting the following morning at 10 o'clock. I went to the meeting, the mayor, and the Chevron team, and Mr. Jones, and myself, and a energy consultant, Don Kendall, were present. And, very good meeting. I learned a lot about what the city is doing with this project, but I wanted to personally thank everybody for allowing me to be a part of the project, or a program, if you will. Getting on from that, the meeting was at City Hall, and do I think the deal's a good deal? I think it is a good deal. A $1.5 million project is a good deal, under its current format. However, it supports big corporation and union, and no jobs are yet to be guaranteed to the City of Garden Grove. That part, I hope, will change. It claims to pay for about 70% of the yard's electrical usage, and actually turns out to be probably around 30% to 35%, is all we're going to say. These mathematical figures, I won't get into the whole formula, were done by an outside third party, and it's probably going to save the city and the neighborhood of a half a million dollars over 20 years, at a cost of doing a project of one and a half million. It's a taxpayer-funded project, which is how we can afford to do it, and I believe that the city, in the long run, will probably save almost nothing, as the city yard is slated for redevelopment. And from what I've gathered, it's in about 10 years, they say it's 20 to 30. At any rate, to have to dismantle that system and relocate it is probably going to absorb, if not all, most of that saving that the city anticipates. Do I think a PPA program is a better way to go? Yes, I do. It's investor-owned, has no maintenance cost to the city, no upgrade cost to the city, and it probably does and will guarantee a 60% to 70% saving to the city's electrical usage at that location. I believe, however, that the Department of Energy program is a free-money grant, and if we don't use it, we lose it. Would the city do this project if the grant was not there? I doubt it. No city would spend one and a half million to save a half million. So I just wanted the public to be aware of how this is working. It's part of a stimulus bill program handed down from the federal government. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor and the staff, and Mr. Jones, and everybody who allowed me to sit in the meeting. According to the most recent study, there are 125,000 green jobs in California. That's expected to increase to 400,000 jobs by the year 2020. The current unemployment rate in California is about 11.9%. In reality, we know it's probably 16. We lost 30,000 jobs last month, 840,000 jobs last year. 400,000 jobs over 20 years is not going to close the gap on the unemployment in California. We cannot rely on this sector to bail us out. We need other avenues. In June of this year, the Public Utility Commission said $115 billion was needed to meet the task of Governor Schwarzenegger's latest bill. State Assembly Bill AV560 dated September 1, 2009 places a cap of 3.5% on net metering solar projects. That means where you have an excess of what you use and you sell it back. 3.5% of all systems statewide will be allowed to do that. Not every one of them will be allowed to do that. This will delete the potential of earnings, or monies, or credit to the solar system owner to offset the expense of the purchase amount of a system.
Go ahead, wrap it up. Just another minute or so, go ahead.
Okay, good enough. It was also the incentive to buy a solar system because it was greater than the tax credit benefit given by state and government, and federal government. Point of all this is the savings utilities, the government, the municipalities, are saving all this money on their end at the expense of taxpayers. Project currently planned in a state already satisfied at 3.5% this year alone, meaning no new project will ever qualify for this, leaving the homeowner out to dry in order to make their system not only pay for themselves, but to generate an income, or to add into the grid.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you. Peggy Bergen.
Well, really, I had no plans of even coming to the meeting tonight. I looked over the agenda, and nothing seemed too earth-shaking. But I did decide to come, and one of the reasons was, I believe I owe Mr. Broadwater, Councilman Broadwater, an apology. Last time I was here, I acted in a very rude fashion, and I began to think about it, and I realized that I was on the side that you guys usually are, where someone says something and it's taken up with a slightly different inference. So it kind of made me stop and think that sometimes we're not understanding exactly what you're trying to say, and you don't really understand what we're trying to say. But that is, I didn't think I treated him in a very grown-up fashion. But that's not the reason exactly why I came. Today, I was at a city-run adult education yoga class, which I've been going to off and on for two and a half years. I am more limber than I was then, so that was very beneficial. But, we did find out, because he has been saying he didn't know how the education tax cuts in the city, the Board of Education, what his class would be, how many sessions he'd lose, or whatever. Well, he did find that, I don't know, he's losing probably between last year, last June, and this February. He will lose 16 of his 29 hours that he's working and helping adult education classes be more physically active. But, not only is he losing the classes, which is available to this, any citizen, now, they don't even have to be in our city, just in this general locality, but the cost, which used to be free, which is a lovely cost for people that are, you know, on more limited incomes, is now going to be $50 a session. The session will be nine weeks. This year, we paid $20 for the entire semester, which is 18 weeks, which is fairly agreeable. And I hear from other people that take yoga anywhere else that that is so cheap, it's just unbelievable. But now it's going to be, for the same class I was taking a year ago this time, for, from September to June, for free, is going to cost me $200 this next semester. Now, that is an astronomical increase, and I do think we, as citizens of this city, we deserve some events and activities that we can go, that we can afford to go to. But it's getting to be there, cutting back the hours so many of so many things, canceling them. He did say at the end of his little discussion with us before we started, that he did feel by next June, that his job would be no longer existing in the city. The cutbacks would become so severe. Now, I do fully realize that you have nothing to do with the school board, other than the funding that comes in and out of the city, but I do think you, as council members, should be very involved in knowing what's going from our, these booklets. What's disappearing as activities for our citizens? Because there's little enough to do out there that doesn't cost a lot of money for people that are on a somewhat limited income to do, and then you find out now something you got for free two years ago, and we're all willing to pay something. But now a couple of the people in the class, just when he said how much the cost was going to be, they're not going to be able to afford to sign up next semester. So it does make you stop and think, that this is part of your job as well, as to find out what activities are going on in the city and help some of them be in existence for our citizens. We don't come here on vacation. We're not here temporarily. We're here every day, every week, and we do need activities for the citizens here. And I was very surprised. I mean, that's what I told my kids. Thank God he told us before Christmas, they've all been saying, "What do you want for Christmas?" And I'll say, "$50 bills." But, you know, it's kind of something shocking, because this is something I'm involved in. I don't know how many other. I heard from another lady, they had a stained glass class that was canceled. Now, that's just one little tiny thing, but now you think of the people that went there, now they're going to another city that is still offering one. So that is something we can, I think, really work at, is finding things for our citizens to do. Thank you very much, and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Peggy. You know, you might consider going to a school board meeting, too, and voicing your opinion. Yeah, okay. You're welcome. Rod Powell.
Happy holidays for me, to you as well, and to city staff as well. Mayor, as you know, it might have, I think it was a house you're familiar with over on Abbott, and it got graffitied over the last couple of weeks, somewhere over around there. At least, I'm familiar with it, and it's rumored that you're familiar with that house. The house right across from my street got graffitied with the same decoration, as did one on Lenore. And it was within just about a few days, and the city came out and actually removed all of those. So, I just wanted to, you know, if anyone's watching this on TV, you know, you can actually call the city if there's a graffiti like that. It was appreciated that you guys, that the city did that. Just like that, you know. I was, you know, I'm gonna try not to talk about anything negative tonight, although I am going to say this really fast. I have said at least a couple times, and in private, about one of the council members, Councilmember Doe, how it says on the city paperwork that you can pick up when you walk into City Hall, that he's resided in Garden Grove since 1976. What does it take to be listened to? He's lived here since 2008. You know, it'd be the same thing as me saying that I've lived in, I haven't been in Anaheim. I grew up there. I left there at 18 or 19, and I have not been back. I'm no longer a resident of Anaheim. If I went back there now, I would say I've been a resident since now. So, that's all I'm going to say on that. I won't say no more. I really have nothing else to say. I think I've made my case. I'd rather talk about fireworks issue. I happen to have an old petition here that has almost 250... I happen to have an old petition here that has almost 250 signatures. I think Russ McDonald helped collect these signatures. But it's always said, at the time we were talking about fireworks before, it's always said that we don't have all the people down here. We don't have, you know, like Mark Rosen used to say, "Where's all the people?" I mean, here's all the people. This is, this is, this is 250 signatures. It's the same thing. Not everyone has the capacity. A lot of these people are older, feeble, you know, they're concerned because literally dogs run away and, and never are found again. They maybe don't, they don't make it, you know, to being found once they left, you know, they deserted a house because of the fireworks. It's a serious matter, the fireworks. It's serious enough that at the minimum, we should vote on it. I don't think there's anyone on this council that will deny that it won't be long and it will be, you know, I'm, you know, what, five years, 10 years? Hopefully, there will never have to be a negative hurtful incident that, that puts it to where we don't have fireworks. But it's just a matter of time. This is not going to go on forever where we have fireworks. It may be the worst thing to vote on it because right now, the fireworks company may spend a fortune to get their way, like they did in Buena Park. I mean, it's like, it's like, like the mafia, who's got the most money? You know? In Buena Park, the council voted to ban fireworks. And the fireworks company got upset. You know, the guy that was down here from TNT Fireworks, the same guy got upset and coordinated a major effort to have a special vote. They spent a quarter million dollars or something, some astronomical amount. It was in the grand jury report that I read. And Joe Average Citizen in Buena Park that didn't want those and was happy with the council's decision, they got, what's the word? They got, is shafted something I can say? You know, because that was just a farce. And now they don't have, they have fireworks back again. So at the minimum, I think I'd like to get this voted on. I, I don't know for sure, but I'd like to think that Bruce and Dina haven't changed their minds and at least would be for the democratic process of having it voted on. I don't know if anything I read in that grand jury report got through enough that either you or Steve would maybe change your minds, you know, and, and consider at least letting us vote on it. And the wild card, of course, is we don't know how Councilman Doe would go. I hope, I'd like to think that maybe that you would be the deciding if, if they don't change their minds and consider that this is something just that at least we can have voted on. I think that would be the right thing to do. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dalton, council staff and residents. Happy holidays to everyone. And I want to speak about something positive and something exciting. I want to address you tonight to endorse item 10A, the formation of an exploratory committee and creating a feasibility study for a Vietnam War museum in Garden Grove. At the November 10th City Council meeting, I challenge this council to proceed with making Councilman Bruce Broadwater's visionary dream come true. Others have subsequently addressed this issue before you. In the days since my address to this council, citizens and soldiers alike have asked, "When can I write a check?" Or, "How can I help?" This is great. This dream has a great support in our community and it's time to make it happen. This weekend, Colonel Jack Pitchford, age 82, died. Who was he? He was an Air Force fighter pilot from Mississippi who survived seven years in the Hanoi Hilton after his plane was shot down over North Vietnam in 1965. He was taken to Wallow Prison, where he was joined two years later by Senator John McCain and Medal of Honor winner George Bud Day. His unit, the Wild Weasels, flew low altitude missions hunting down and destroying surface-to-air missiles in the F-100 Super Savers. He once said, "War is hell. It truly is hell. There are no winners and there are no losers." So tonight, this proposal comes at no better time. The Vietnam War veteran population, both American and Vietnamese, is nearing or beyond the retirement age. This means they are at the top of their income levels and/or will have more time to devote to this cause. Former Mayor Frank Frye of Westminster worked very hard to complete the Westminster Vietnam War Memorial. We can do it, too. If this council has the courage and perseverance to see this project through, it can generate in the neighborhood of $5 million per year down the road. International exposure will create a tourist magnet for Garden Grove and put its name in the spotlight along with Anaheim's. With proper financial oversight, a balanced board of community, government, and culture, this museum will bring a lot of pride to Garden Grove. It will truly teach new generations that war is truly hell. And for this reason, we must be serious about how we do this. In no way should it become a political football used as a springboard to office. All politicians and all citizens have friends and relatives touched by this war. This is a community effort. A serious effort here can free up federal stimulus money. This is a shovel-ready project that will create jobs in Garden Grove and generate new foot traffic for commerce. Built-in stages, who knows the full positive potential? A temporary facility can immediately begin generating revenue using exhibitions such as the Traveling Wall. Veteran groups will have a fundraising visual to spirit our efforts forward. So I urge a positive yes vote on this issue tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll close oral communication, then we'll go to written communication.
Mr. Mayor, you have a request from the Garden Grove Community Foundation for the use of the Willowood Golf Course for their annual golf tournament. And it's recommended that the council approve this request.
I'll move on it.
Second.
Okay, we're, I'll call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, next item is reorganization of the city council, selection of Mayor Potem.
I nominate Councilman Jones to remain as Mayor Potem.
A second nomination.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we'll recess the council and go to the agency. At this time, we open up the Garden Grove Agency of Community Development. Ms. Baylor, could you please call roll?
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here. At this time, we've had oral communication.
Nominate President Dalton to remain.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And for the vice president, I nominate Andrew Doe.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. Consent items.
Mr. President, you have one item, 3A, and that's an agreement with the City of Fountain Valley for the detachment of sewer services areas located within the City of Fountain Valley. It's recommended for approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters from board members?
No.
Okay, hearing none. The next meeting will adjourn to Tuesday, January 26, 2010, at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. And we will reconvene the Industrial Development Authority and let the record show that all members are present.
Chair Nguyen.
Okay, the next item is reorganization.
All right. Well, Bill is doing so good. Item number two, reorganization of the authority.
It's been a year and I forgot that, sorry.
Do I have a nomination for the chair?
You do. I nominate.
Yeah, nomination for Chair Nguyen to remain chair.
Second.
Call for vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
Steve Jones.
This is getting boring. I want to challenge you.
Second.
Call for vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now go to the consent items.
Madam Chair, you've got two items, 3A and 3B, and it's recommended that you act on these simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
Move the, move the balance. Tucker.
Call for vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no items for consideration. Any matters from authority members? Hearing none, I'll now call for the adjournment of the Industrial Development Authority.
Okay, I'll reconvene the Garden Grove City Council meeting, let the record show all members are present, and we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 5A through 5H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a council member.
Move the balance.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, number six, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, you have a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan and Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan for continued CDBG and home funding. Allison Mills is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening. The item you have before you is an amendment to our Citizen Participation Plan and its accompanying displacement policy. The proposed amendment is necessary to ensure that the city is in compliance with HUD requirements and that the city remains eligible to continue to receive federal funds. The Citizen Participation Plan is a public document that sets forth the procedures the city will follow to ensure citizen involvement in the development, review, and adoption of our HUD-funded programs. The proposed amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan will give the city the ability to expedite substantial amendments to plans by deleting a local requirement for public hearings. In an effort to keep the public informed and to encourage public comment, either a 15-day or 30-day public comment period will continue to be required whenever an amendment is proposed. The attachment to the Citizen Participation Plan is the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan. As a condition of receiving federal funds, the city must certify that it is following this plan, which contains two major components. One, that all low, moderate-income dwelling units that are demolished in connection with the HUD funds be replaced. And two, that relocation assistance is provided to any lower-income person who is displaced as a direct result of the demolition of a low, moderate-income dwelling unit in connection with a HUD-funded activity. The amended Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan complies with the HUD requirements. Last night, the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission held a public hearing to consider the proposed amendment. They unanimously voted to recommend its transmission to city council. Tonight, you're asked to conduct a public hearing to accept public comments regarding the proposed amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan and the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan and to approve the amendment. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move the item.
Second. Okay, motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Number eight, items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, item eight is the issuance of certificates of participation, also known as our water revenue bonds. And Kingsley Okariki is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. With this item, staff is requesting that you formally authorize the issuance of the water revenue bonds built into the water financial plan, which the city council approved in 2007. And also to authorize staff to assemble the team necessary to facilitate the sale of the bonds. In June 2007, city council adopted a 10-year water financial plan prepared by our consultant, Black and Vege, to maintain the financial stability of the Water Enterprise Fund. The plan identified the overall revenues required for efficient operations, maintenance, and capital improvement of the Gading Grove water system. To achieve these goals, the plan recommended a financing strategy that included a combination of user fee increases and a $32 million revenue bond financing. On July 10, 2007, the city council, with community input, considered and approved annual customer rate adjustments over a five-year period, in line with the financial plan. The council also recently considered and approved necessary rate adjustments to accommodate the increased cost of wholesale water purchases. The revenues generated from these approved rate adjustments are deemed sufficient and will be used to support water operations, cover wholesale water costs, begin the capital improvement work, and to make the required debt service payments on the bonds under consideration tonight. The resolution before you tonight addresses the revenue bond financing side of this financial plan. An authorizing resolution of the Gading Grove City Council is necessary to actually issue the bonds. The city has completed a water master plan that includes a detailed list of capital projects with estimates, estimated costs, and timelines for execution of the project. The master plan addresses the critical capital needs necessary to promote the water system's continuous improvement, provide fire flow capability, and ensure consistent compliance with drinking water standards. The projects will be executed over the next 10 years with the proceeds of this bond issue, augmented with revenues. Attachment A to the agenda outlines the capital improvement program and also has a comprehensive list of the projects attached. Consistent with this water master plan, the strategy is to issue the debt in two installments of $16.5 million in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2010/11, and the balance in a later year when the proceeds of this first issuance is used up towards the projects. At this time, it is anticipated that the first installment of $16.5 million would be issued as uninsured fixed-rate certificate of participation structured to provide level debt service payments over the 20-year financing period. The financial advisor will assist staff in assessing the California market conditions at a time of the sale to determine the appropriate interest rates and other terms of offer received at a time. And we are looking at February 24, 2010, as the target closing date for this debt issuance. All things considered, especially with the holidays and all during this period, this is an expedited schedule. And we are pursuing this target date for a couple of reasons. First, we took the time to ensure that we have in place the water master plan and the revenues necessary to support the debt-financed projects before going out to sell the bonds. Public Works has been executing some of the projects over the past few years with available revenues. Some of the major projects executed so far include developing the water master plan itself, the chlorine conversion design and construction, which cost approximately $1.7 million. There's also the Catella Avenue main replacement, the number-one fire flow deficiency that has been executed to the tune of $1.4 million. The number-two floor, fire flow deficiency, which is water main replacement, is presently under design and will be awarded this fiscal year in the neighborhood of $1.3 million. At this point, the Public Works group are now at the point where the debt proceeds are required to continue the additional major projects and overall work of restoring the water system. Exhibit A attached to the resolution outlines the project that will be embarked on with the bond proceeds. Moreover, given the current low-interest environment, it is certainly worthwhile to expedite the completion of this bond transaction before interest rates begin to increase or to rise. Therefore, it is necessary at this point to assemble and retain the services of the required financing team. The essential, essential members of the team required at this point are the financial advisor, the bond counsel, and the bond disclosure counsel. Given that, staff deems the following actions appropriate and necessary under the circumstance with respect to each of the team members. With regards to the financial advisor, staff is recommending that we retain the services of Sequoia Financial Group, LLC, as the financial advisor to research and assemble this debt financing. And the financial advisor has agreed to accept the fee terms and continue to provide services as indicated in Attachment B to the agenda item. With regards to the bond counsel, staff recommends that we continue to use the services of the law offices of Stradling York of the law offices of Stradling, Yocca, Carson, and Route as the bond counsel for this assignment. The law firm has an existing agreement with the city and the agency and has worked with the city on previous bond and CEOP debt issuances. The fee structure for this assignment will be the same as was agreed in prior bond deals. Now, with regards to the disclosure counsel, staff is recommending that we retain the services of the law firm of Jones Hall to act as the disclosure counsel for the 2010 debt issuance, substantially for the same terms as on file with previous bond deals that they have served as disclosure counsel for the city of Gadding Grove. With regards to the underwriter, we are at this point taking the position that it's not necessary to hire one right now. The city will pursue the method of sale that will yield the lowest overall cost of borrowing. In any case, the water revenue obligation we think will be issued either by means of a competitive sale method, limited negotiated sale, or private placement, whichever produces the overall cost of, lowest cost of borrowing. And staff will work with the financial advisor and bond counsel to solicit scope of services and price quotes and select a fiscal agent, trustee, verification agent, and other firms or services that we need to complete the debt issuance. Now, in terms of the economics of the deal, everything at this point is still an estimate. However, based on the current interest environment, it is expected that the bonds will be issued at a net interest cost of approximately 5% or less. Underwriter's discount is projected to be about 0.5%, or the equivalent of $5 per $1,000 worth of bonds. The estimated total cost of issuance is projected at under $200,000. And these monies will go to compensate the various members of the financing team, including the financial advisor, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, fiscal agent, and verification agent. Now, with all of this, staff at this point is recommending that the city council take the following actions. That the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of the water revenue bond in an amount not to exceed $32 million for the water projects. Direct the city manager to execute a contract with Sequoia Financial Group and appoint him as the financial advisor for this assignment. We're also asking that you direct the city manager to appoint Stradling, Yocca, Carson, and Route as the bond counsel for this assignment. In addition, we are also requesting that you direct the city manager to appoint Jones Hall Law Firm as the disclosure bond counsel for this assignment. And also to authorize the city manager or his designee to enter into all necessary agreements to assemble the financing team, including underwriter, trustee, fiscal agent, and others that are necessary to effectively ready the issuance of the 2010 water revenue obligation debt. And let me point out also that upon completion of all the necessary work, all the legal work, documentations, debt structuring, and marketing, we are going to come back to city council before we go out to sale in February, for city council to actually approve all of those documents. So you'll have another chance to look at the documents and the structure of the bonds. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Okuriki, I know you have mentioned all of this, but I just want to make it clear for the general public, who might be a little bit overwhelmed by the details presented. This bond is part of a master plan that was previously approved by this council, is that right?
That's correct.
And what we're doing today is part of the implementation of that master plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
And would you say, as a financial specialist representing the city, that we are in a favorable climate right now to issue such bond, given the interest rate that we have?
Yeah, given the interest rate environment, this is the lowest it's been in a while, and the conditions are good for issuing revenue bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We will know who the underwriter is before February?
Yeah, we will come back at that point with recommendations as to who the underwriter will be.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why are we needing all the bonds all at once? Like, why can't we break down the bonds like ten, ten, ten? Why are we doing all at one time when we're not using all the money at the same time?
Well, actually, we are doing it in two installments. The total amount of bond is $32 million. We are going to issue, the first issuance will be for $16.5 million, and we'll spend that on projects. We'll go out to issue the balance of it when we run out of money from this first issuance. So essentially, it would be two tranches, if you will.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item. Second.
Okay, motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes, with councilmember in wind, voting no.
Okay, eight B.
Mr. Eight B. Mr. Mayor, eight B is award of contract to Griffith Structures for the development of a public safety facilities master plan. And Keith Jones is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The past several years, Public Works and Fire Department and police have been working diligently to handle a growing problem as far as aging infrastructure in the facilities that police is in and fire needing expansion, as well as PD. And over the course of these last few years, we've learned a lot about that process. We've learned that police buildings are very unique structures. They have complicated systems as far as communications and the requirements that go into a building. And it's in the interests of any city planning to expand a facility to hire somebody to help them with that because of the expertise involved in that. Along those lines, one of the first things we realized we needed to do was a needs assessment for a police building and police facility. And we accomplished that in September 2008. We entered an agreement with Griffin Structures Incorporated to conduct this needs assessment for the Garden Grove Police Department. The needs assessment identified space requirements for each personnel, level, and function, as well as space needs for equipment and storage. And the assessment concluded that the current Garden Grove Police Station, which was built in 1972, does not have the adequate space to house officers and equipment and evidence files all in one building. The, in order to meet the space requirements, which is about 90,000 square feet, have needed office space. A new police facility would be the best option, but further review and the city's ability to cover the cost of that has been, it's cost prohibitive to do that. So we, in the last six months, have strategized and come up with an alternative strategy to accomplish meeting the growing needs of the police department to expand and also handle the needs of the Fire Department. And we think together that we've hit upon an alternative strategy that'll work. That alternative strategy to accommodate current and projected space requirements for the next fifteen years is to relocate Fire Headquarters and Station One into a new building at the city-owned site adjacent to City Hall, which was previously the Black Angus Restaurant. This would allow the police department to expand in the current Fire Building. And furthermore, this would provide needed improvements to the Fire Station and enhance fire response capabilities to the area. Now, a methodical analysis and thorough planning is necessary to ensure that resources are not wasted and that the buildings will be able to accommodate present and future increases in public safety personnel. We've, staff from Public Works and Police and Fire, as I've said, has determined that development of a comprehensive public safety master plan is essential for future financial planning and maximizing the use of the space and determining how to address both the short-term and long-term space requirements for the two departments. The first phase will provide conceptual design services for the construction of a new Fire Headquarters and Station, as stated previously, at the Black Angus Site, and the expansion of the police department into the areas vacated by the Fire Department. The second phase of the proposed master plan is, will include schematic design services for a four-bay Fire Station and administration offices, as well as to establish cost estimates for the construction. And the third and final phase will provide schematic design services and cost estimates for the renovation, reconfiguration, expansion of the police department. Now, staff has been involved with numerous discussions with Griffin Structures over the past year. As I said, they assisted, or did, the needs assessment for public safety. And as a result, Griffin has obtained considerable data and information from the city's public safety operations and specific needs. Moreover, they have many, many projects worth of data on projects that have done in the past that can be applied towards the public safety expansion, as well as the Fire Department's new facilities. And Griffin Structures has significant experience in developing public safety master plans for many Orange County cities, such as Westminster, City of Buena Park, City of Brea, and City of Irvine. The cost developed to public safety facilities master plan is $263,250. And the project will be financed through the Public Safety Fund and Police-Fire Trust Funds. There is no financial impact to the general fund. It is recommended, therefore, that the city council award the contract for professional consulting services to Griffin Structures Incorporated to develop the public safety facilities master plan in the amount of $263,250 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Completes my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And we do have the owner of Griffin Structures here, Roger Torero.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Fratell.
Mr. Jones, a needs assessment has already been done previously, right? So would it be fair to say that this project, this item, is to basically flesh out and kind of get into a level of detail into what we need to build to meet those needs? Would that be fair to say?
Yes, that would be correct.
And only by having such a plan done can we even begin to look into how much it would cost to build it and go out with an RFP. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this process is necessary for our data to proceed?
Yes.
And when we, excuse me, when we do this project, part of the process in, if, say, if we were to utilize a bond, for instance, to build this facility, we would need to go through this anyway at some point, is that right, in order to issue a bond?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, have we narrowed down to what type of financing we are considering? Specifically, I would like to throw out the public-private partnership option for you to consider going forward. I know from a lot of projects that we have done or have seen done around the county, both with cities as well as with the County of Orange, that there's a lot of interest right now because of municipalities strapped for cash. And so the public-private partnership is a great way where we own the land, we turn it over to a private entity, they build a structure based on our needs, lease it back to us, and then after so many years, we would then own the property outright. So I would like to have that option be considered going forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move the issue. Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Broadwater. Motion received. Five yes votes.
HC.
Mr. Mayor, eight C is an award of contract to All American Asphalt for the rehabilitation of Harbor Boulevard. And Keith Jones is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Real briefly, it is a reconditioning of the street on existing failed pavement areas and milling and crack ceiling, typical reconstruction. Eleven bids were qualified, eleven qualified bids were received and opened in the city clerk's office on November 24. And following the municipal code and the city's purchasing manual, the lowest qualified bidder was selected, and that turned out to be All American Asphalt, with a total bid of $919,000. And the bid is within the current budget project. The funds will be paid for out of gas tax and Mezzan local funds and federal stimulus funds. It is recommended the city council award contract to All American Asphalt for $919,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. That's complete staff's report. He'd be happy to answer any questions.
Move the issue.
No, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Move the issue.
Second.
Okay, motion second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Broadwater didn't take. Motion received. Five yes votes. Sorry.
Okay, number nine.
Mr. Mayor, nine A is ordinance for second reading. That's ordinance number 2761. An ordinance of the city council, the city Garden Grove approving amendment number A-149-09, an amendment to the Brookers-Chapman specific plan, Brookers-Chapman commercial to allow children's learning center as a new use.
Any questions for staff?
I don't think I should be here, do I?
No, I think you need to step down on this one.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Yes. Have you checked on my location? Am I okay with this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Lost him again.
Okay, you're back. Okay, 10A.
Mr. Mayor, 10A is a request by councilmember Bruce Broadwater to consider formation of an exploratory study and the funding of a feasibility study for a Vietnam War museum.
Shit should be wandering in that door just about now. I've talked a little bit about it, the, having a Vietnam War museum in the city of Garden Grove. I think what really turned me on to this was a trip to New Orleans, where I saw the World War II museum down there. It was done so well. It was almost perfect. I mean, you could have spent three or four days in it. It was so exciting to see so much going on there. I'm not sure what the cost was, but I think it was about, it cost $10 or $15 to go through it. And it was jam-packed. And I think that our community would be a great community to do a war museum for the Vietnam War. And it's the longest war this country's ever had. It lasted thirteen years. We lost 60,000 Americans there. I have no clue how many Vietnamese soldiers were lost there. But there were exceptional errors of the war itself. Things went on from one end of Vietnam to the other. And I just think that now, while there's still some, some of those materials still available, now would be the time to make a collection of them. And I think we'd be on the map with the Garden Grove Vietnam War Museum. I think it's something that would really bring in visitors. And at this point, I'd like to get your permission. I'm not sure that, it should be the city forever doing this, but I do believe it should be the city to start it. Let me put it this way. And one of the things I've noticed about organizations when they start up is somebody every once in a while steals the money. And I'd like to have an organization just exactly like we have the Community Foundation. It's a, it's an organization that can set money, and it does really good things. And the treasury for that organization is the city of Garden Grove. I'd hate to have, I'd hate to get donations and then have somebody run off of the money. And so I really think it's something that we can be involved in ourselves. Then we don't have to be involved forever. And we can certainly bring in outside people, like the foundation does. A lot of board members on foundation do business in Garden Grove, and they do things here. They don't live here particularly. But the foundation is, I mean, take a look at that lighting the Christmas tree event the other day. That's an event that wasn't here when I was mayor. And I think you guys come up with it while I was gone. It was a fantastic event. I think we could look into this museum, and that's why I'd like to do a feasibility study on it. Wouldn't cost a tremendous amount of money to do it. And I'd like to form an exploratory committee that works with a feasibility study and so that we could put it together and find out really would it work in the city of Garden Grove. I do believe it would. The only competition for that right now is a place in Lubbock, Texas. And there was a song one time about Lubbock, Texas. The best I ever saw of Lubbock, Texas was in my rearview mirror, something like that. And I don't want to put Lubbock, Texas down, but I think that we can do better here. We can do a great job here. And I'd certainly like to at least explore doing it. And I think this council can be involved. I think that the committee that we start with And then I think we can bring in eight or nine other people from the community to take a look at the feasibility study, where we go forward with it. Is it, will we be able to raise the money? And we'd be talking about a lot of money. It would be outside money. It would not be internal money. And could, could we get a hold of the information, the films we need to make, and all the kinds of studies, things that we would need to do? That's what the feasibility study would do. It would tell us whether it would even work. I mean, if it's not going to work, then we certainly like to have somebody tell us that knows what they're doing to tell us not to do it, not to do it. And the feasibility study may just say that. I don't think it will, but I'm hoping it won't. But there's always that possibility. The building down in New Orleans was an old industrial building that they had overhauled, and it really, really worked well for this museum. We have some places that might be available. The Costco building would be a fantastic building for it, the old Costco building. It's huge, and it would be big enough, and you can change the whole interior in it to have different levels, mezzanines and stuff like that. It doesn't have to be that building, but there's things that it could be. And so I would like to have your vote tonight to go forward with this to the next step. Chet was going to tell us about a feasibility study a little bit that...
Mr. Broad, Councilmember Broadwater and members of the council, staff has spent a little bit of time doing some preliminary work in preparation for such a venture. On the feasibility study, having worked with our various theme parks and so forth, we have identified a couple consultants who not only do feasibilities for theme parks but for museums as well. BRC happens to be one of them. Economic Research happens to be another one that we could retain. And I think the most important next step really is to scope out the project, look at, you know, what, there's a lot of ideas, sort of narrow it down to what aspect of the war, what other kinds of things we want to have in this center. Put the scope together and then let them develop sort of the parameters for a museum that would be successful, what it would take, what are the dollar parameters, what are the size requirements, and things of that nature. But I think we have identified some good consultants, and I think all we need to do is give them a basic scoping of the study and then move forward after that.
Are you finished?
You have a question?
Yes, I do. What kind of dollar amount are you asking for?
I'm, I'm not sure what the dollar amounts would be at this point in time.
I'd like to do this. When we figure out who's going to do it and how much it would cost, bring it back to the council.
Well, we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit in doing it that way. We need to know the, what type of feasibility, the scope of that feasibility. And the scope is determined by how much money we put into it. I mean, you can do a whole lot more digging if you spend $100,000 versus, say, $5,000 or $10,000. So, so we're asking, we're being asked here to vote on a concept, really. And I don't think, I can't vote on something that vague.
Well, I think, just like you said a minute ago, Mr. Broadwater, I can't, couldn't you contact these people and get an idea of what we can get for our money and then bring it back?
Sure.
I mean, you know, you're right. It's going to be back and forth on a lot of things because we don't know. I mean, but I think to get just a preliminary idea is probably not going to cost us anything. And that's part of the feasibility of the feasibility study.
No, I beg to differ. There are a lot of stakeholders in the community on a project like this. And as you know, the Vietnam War evokes a lot of emotional responses in people. And so a lot of people would like to participate in that decision-making process. And so who you choose to involve in the feasibility study can make or break the process in itself.
I think Mr. Broadwater was trying to say what you just said, Mr. Doe, that staff are looking into who can offer that for us to look at and then bring it back here. We're not picking anybody yet. You want to know what, where, when, how? Well, staff is going to bring that back and let us know who, who is available to do that. And then at that point in time, we can decide or not decide.
I, the better approach to me is we continue this item, and if there are proposals as far as consultants that we would like, or staff would like the council to consider, then present those names to us. Give us a chance to look into this idea and into the background of these consultants. Because we are being, being asked to vote for an idea. And then when, when staff comes back, then it's, it's already limited as far as who gets to look at, which consultants will be looked at. Whereas those things should be something that we, we consider going in and have them be included in the process.
And that's what we're doing, is to allow staff to look for consultant that we can decide on.
Well, that's, well, you just said what I was trying to avoid, which is that, that staff is being asked now to present a limited choice to us, like, these are the people you want to look at.
We do that all the time with everything we do around here.
Right, but they do that before we vote on it, not after we vote on it.
They have that expertise to know who.
If that's, if we can do that, I'll just have staff do it. I mean, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to do this all on my own. But that's not what I'm asking. I'm bringing it before the council. Now, the truth of matter is, if we can do it like you say, then I'd be more than happy to work with staff and do it without going through the council. I think that's silliness, but...
Wait, how can you go through the staff without the council?
Well, you're saying that they bring it forward all the time to us. So we talk to staff, we say, hey, this is what I like to do. I'll put it in a pink and say, I'd like to have the numbers on a feasibility study. I mean, I'm trying not to do that. I'm trying to bring it before my fellow councilmen and see if they would be interested in doing this. If you're not, you can vote no.
Well, let's, let's use an example of the, the public safety facility master plan. When they came to us, not, I wasn't here, but I assume they came with a proposal of these are the consultants we're going to use to do the master plan, we're seeking your approval out of these five consultants. We have gotten bids. This is what, this is what our recommendation is, and you vote on it. They didn't come to you and say, hey, we want to determine a needs assessment. Why don't you vote in the, for the concept, and then we'll go out and pick out a bunch of consultants for you to consider?
Well, I think with the, with the police facility, what they did, and Griffith got it, but, you know, some companies that are in that business, that's our specialty. I'm not so sure we can't come up with something other, if you contact, say, the Smithsonian, you know, where do they do their research? Who do, who do they use? There may or may not be somebody out here or some people they recommend. And we don't have to commit to anything right now. But it's the concept, I think, and we have to get an idea. And the devil in the details right now is, how do we get this thing rolling?
Excuse me, Mayor. Mr. Doe, I, what you just said, we did in the water plan, we're just asking for that same procedure.
There was already a master plan voted on. I don't understand what the analogy is.
No, how it started. We're asking for the same way that we initiated that, we would go through the same process to initiate this. Because if you say that's the right way to do it, then we like to start it like that.
Well, let me, let me, let me see if I can at least put a motion together, and then if you don't like my motion, you can talk about my motion. But I'd like to make a motion that Deana and myself have the ability to work with staff to take a look at putting what it would cost to put a feasibility study together, what it would encounter, and even see how many companies actually, and there are companies that specialize in feasibility studies for museums, and see what it costs and bring it back to the council. And that would be my motion.
Well, I have a lot of problems going forward, aside from the composition of the committee and whether or not this is the appropriate thing for the city to take on. It is a political quagmire. We get into this, I can tell you, you will be criticized by one group or another. But aside from that, here's what I see. We have been voting for projects, skate parks, water features, increasing water rates, and now we are being asked to, to fund a feasibility study for a museum that is not part of our, our critical needs now. We just, we just authorized a bond right now for the water bond. And for us to come here and assume that, that we don't have enough interest, that we need to find out a way to meet that interest or to judge that level of interest. We have Lieutenant Major Quang Pham, who spoke last time, who's already involved on a whatever exploratory committee and is very familiar with the various different Vietnam museum projects around the country. He is working on it for free. And so, and, and let's, earlier there was mention of the Westminster War Memorial. That was done by a private foundation headed by Councilmember Frank Frye, but it's a private foundation. And they raised private money all the way, and they built it.
And they put it on public land. The City of Westminster was so involved in that, they were involved it up to their neck.
Yeah, but they didn't vote money to, to do a feasibility study.
They just gave them a huge piece of land.
I'm sorry, the feasibility study is not on the table right now. And I'd like to second Mr. Broadwater's motion.
Why don't you restate the motion so we all understand?
I'd like to make a motion that myself and Deana work with staff to bring back all that we can information on a fee, what it would take to do a feasibility study, and what would, what would we get out of it? What would we want with it? And it's certainly become before the council. It's not that big a deal.
So you're talking no cost factor at this point?
At this moment, there's no cost, maybe some staff time, there's cost on that. But outside of that, there's no cost yet.
Oh, so it's different from what you are proposing here then, that, because it says funding for a feasibility study.
I didn't put that in there. But talking about funding for a feasibility study is certainly something that we can do.
Oh, so the motion is different then?
The motion, so the motion now says that we're not talking about any cost. We're talking about some staff time, but the feasibility of what it would cost, and we're not allotting any money to determine that at this point.
I'd be really interested in talking about cost on a lot of things. I mean, we do all kinds of things that we don't recognize the cost in them, and we don't see the cost. But if you want to talk about cost, we can talk about cost. All I want to do is make this happen.
Well, no, I think what you're saying, your motion, is that we're not incurring any cost at this point.
That's correct.
To go to that point. I can support that, if that's specifically in there, we're not incurring any cost at this point. It's strictly information gathering at no cost other than a limited amount of staff time, and then it can be brought back before us. I could support that.
I will support that, but I also, after we vote, I want to have some comment, make some comments on the, on the, on the process by which this item gets on the agenda and, and staff's participation. Because I am relatively new on this council, and, and I, the, the kind of work that has been done by staff up to now is at odds with what I've been told, as far as the kind of stuff that we can do on our own as council members, and the kind of stuff where all the council has to be apprised of what's going on, especially if it involves staff time. Okay? Especially on something like this, because, because it is unfair for staff to work with part of this council to co-op issues that are of mutual interest to everyone. Let's call it what it is. You cannot come in here, take an issue like this, and then just nominate yourself and a fellow that you like, and then have staff cooperate, and then leave us out in the dark.
Why not? Why not? You, let me tell you something. When we got involved in the parking lot issue over here, that parking lot issue, there were four to one votes on here, on the staff. And it was pretty much at that level, all the way through the argument and debate and everything else. But when come time, you brought before us a mo, not a motion, but you wanted to know, are you entitled to ask for information? And we supported you on that. Even though most of us didn't support where you were going, we supported you on that. The cost of the information you asked for was over $8,000.
Okay.
Nobody mentioned that. I'm mentioning it now, but nobody actually mentioned that. Because you know something? Mr. Doe, you were entitled to that information. And the truth of matter is, nobody come up and said, hey, this is what it's going to cost, and this is what it's going to do. We let you have it.
No, no. I'm entitled by law. That information is, I'm entitled to by law. What do you mean, you gave it to me?
We did. We supported you on it.
No, no.
When you ask us, I think, I think, I think we can limit the cost on what was available to anybody here, certainly to one, one city council member.
And I respected you enough to ask for your permission.
And you got it.
To your face. No, you did this behind my back.
I've done nothing behind your back.
You, you mean to tell me you've been talking about this in front of us the whole time? You came here and you talked to staff and got it all prepped by the time you came in here and presented it here. We didn't know anything about it. We don't know what, how much it cost. We don't know who the consultants are.
I've been talking about it ever since...
Mr. Doe, there has nothing been prepped on this. Every, each and every one of us gets to ask staff to put certain items that we're concerned about on agenda. Mr. Broadwater just did that. And that's where you come in.
How did, Ms. Chet, how did you get any information in order to even, to even begin to look into consultants and all that? Who did you talk to? Did you just kind of decipher that out of thin air?
I didn't decide that. We just had casual conversation.
Okay, so you did communicate then?
An idea that was being formulated.
That's right. And a note from the council using staff time at the exclusion of other members of this council. That cannot be appropriate. You told me that, Mr. Fratell?
I think the fact that Councilmember Broadwater asked that this item be on the agenda for this evening is consistent with the past practice of when a council member would like to bring forward an item that would require expenditure of significant staff time under other expenditures. So Mr. Broadwater is doing exactly what the practice of this council has been.
Okay.
And that is why it's on the agenda for tonight.
In the past, when I asked for a simple appearance by a member of the police department at a function to talk about public safety, you remember what you told me? Is I needed council's approval. How can that require council approval, and yet this requiring staff time does not require council approval or knowledge? I don't want to ask for approval. I'm asked to be kept in the loop so that information is not excluded from me until the 12th hour, when it's just presented on the dais here.
In all due respect, Mr. Councilman Doe, my recollection of that request was phrased in the context that the city and another agency would be cosponsoring an event. And at that event, you had asked for a representative from the, from the department, but the context of the event was a cosponsorship. That, that phrase or that context would require the council to approve cosponsoring the event.
So cosponsoring required council approval, whereas when you do the thing yourself and you are the sole sponsor, you don't need approval?
No, that's, that, that's exactly the past practice of why it's on the agenda tonight. I believe if there was expenditures of significant staff time or other expenditures of funds on this matter, then that would not be consistent with the past practice. But what Mr. Broadwater has done to list this item is consistent with the past practice.
Okay. So I can't attack the process now simply because I do not have information as to how much staff time has been put into this. And there's no way I'm going to have that evidence. Okay? But I have a real problem with something like this, where this is something of mutual interest. I am interested in it. I think it's a great thing to do, and I do believe that it is an attraction for our city. But I do not like to be caught by surprise and have someone co-op the issue. I would, why shouldn't it be something that we all discuss and maybe talk about it here and then move forward together?
I think that's what we're doing.
No, no. You came in here and you appointed yourself and then Deana and Miss Councilmember Wind.
I made a motion. I made a motion to do that. I did not appoint myself to anything. And you know something? I have put a number of things on this agenda for the last, how many years have I been on here? I don't know. For the last 10 years, 12 years, I've always put on there. I don't think I've ever taken this much heat in my whole life, as I'm getting from you, Councilman Doe. And the truth of matter is, all I had to do is vote no against it.
Mr. Doe, Mr. Broadwater talked about this several meetings ago. I thought it was a very good idea. I approached Mr. Broadwater and told him, that's a very good idea, and I'd like to be supportive of his idea. I took that initiative and just all of a sudden appointed me. And we're not appointed on anything. You need to make a decision today what you want to do with it. There is no decision yet. Also, the daily, the late, daily course of business dealing with the city, we're going to be in contact with the city staff day in, day out about questions about the city, about things that will affect the city. Well, this is one of the things that will affect... Also, the daily, um, the late, daily course of business dealing with the city, we're gonna be in contact with the city staff day in, day out, about questions about the city, about things that will affect the city. Well, this is one of the things that will affect the city, and we're interested in it. And so, we, I think we have a right to ask staff, how's this gonna affect us? Um, even my, myself, I can say, you know, is this something legal? I have a right to do that, because I have the city's interest at, at stake here. And so far, we really couldn't really decide to do anything, because we don't have your approval, and that's why it's on the agenda for you to discuss. And, you know, you're perfectly, um, okay in your opinion, and I think if you feel that way, um, it's understandable, because you're not putting this on, and, and, and you don't know where this is coming from, but we're putting, well, Mr. Broadwater is putting this on because he doesn't know what it would take to do this. And we just want to have a starting point, so that we're all involved at the same time.
Just so I'm clear on the record, asking the question is not, there's nothing wrong in that. I ask a lot of questions. It's in the information having been obtained and only disseminated and provided to only certain members of this council. That's what I have a problem with. In all the questions that I asked about before, when the answer is given to me, it's given to all members of this council. And, and you can correct me when, when I have been given exclusive access to some information. Let me know, because that's new to me. Okay? Whereas here, I don't know why people looking surprised, like I'm talking about something on Mars here. Obviously, there has been communication. There obviously information been obtained.
We don't have any yet.
Hmm, go ahead, let him finish. Go ahead, Mr. Doe.
And if this is something that had been explored by staff, I'm entitled to be, to be at least apprised that, look, we are spending staff time, we're looking into this issue. So that if I have any concerns or issues that I'm gonna raise to staff, so that you can look into it and let me know, and address my concerns as well.
Point of clarification, if I can, Mr. City Manager?
Um, no, I think I'd better try to put this again in some context. As far as I know, uh, I don't know if any written reports, or summaries, or any information like that has been disseminated to, to any member of the council regarding this item. I do believe since Councilman Broadwater returned from New Orleans, he has been reporting, I think, almost at every council meeting, in some way, of his interest in a Vietnam War museum. So, as Councilwoman Nguyen indicated, this is not something new. This has been something that, again, Councilman Broadwater has been prepping for, and has indicating that he would like to maybe move in that direction. Information that we have obtained has been minimal, and I don't believe has been disseminated in any formal way. So, I don't think, uh, that is inconsistent with, with, again, the past practice. As a city manager, and one that is extremely interested and active in promoting the city of Garden Grove, uh, I think there may be something here.
Okay.
And, uh, through my own efforts, I have tried to learn a little bit more about this in my role as city manager. But I don't believe information has been then forwarded on to council members of any significant, uh, amount. And I think, again, the fact that it's on the agenda, and the timing of this is, is the appropriate point in time, where, in this case, Mr. Broadwater would like to try to move this matter a little bit fur, further, and wants the council to, to, uh, respond to it, or, or concur with it. So, um, there may be an impression that significant staff time has been devoted, or materials have been disseminated. I don't think that's the case. I think it's been kept to a minimum, other than my own interest, in that, that this may be a viable opportunity, and that we are in fact at a point where the councilmen would like to see if there's council interest to move this any further.
The, the comments that have been made by Councilmember Broadwater about the New Orleans museum have been in the, in the form of, that's a good idea to have, and, and it's great to see, uh, uh, memories of, of World War II, and people paying homage to the heroes of that war. That's the extent of the comments. And we all can go back and, and look at the, the footage of the prior council meetings to verify that. Nowhere does it say, or has he said, that public funds or the city staff would be used to conduct any kind of feasibility study. And so, when we talk about, the idea might be with the museum, that might be true, that we talk about the common topic, but how we get there is very different from what we see here. And so, when we, earlier, when we talked to, when we heard from Mr. Osaki about having looked at a few, I don't know what you call it, consultants that, that can do the feasibility studies. Obviously, there have been efforts having put, being put into the process to determine these are some of the consultants that we can use. That must have happened. Otherwise, you wouldn't have had at least some ideas to present to us. And how did you get that idea without talking to some members of this council? And my question is, if we start to narrow down what we're looking at, isn't that the time when the council should be apprised of it? So that we don't just get a narrow list of two, three, five consultants that you happen to pick? This is something that we should have an input in as well, in the process leading up to the decision, not just wait till the last minute and present it as an item, and we just vote up or down.
Well, and I think that's where we are.
I don't think anybody has made a single phone call to, to anybody, as far as getting together a person or a company to do this feasibility study. I think I went to the right man. I think we went to Chet. Uh, Chet probably is involved in more feasibility studies than any person in this staff. And I talked to him. It's all verbal. I put nothing in writing. I have received nothing in writing, and I have done what I thought would be the best thing for me to do, was bring this to my city council.
Okay, we, pardon me. We have a motion and a second, and this, part of that motion is that there will be no funds expended, no funds, limited staff time. We have a motion and a second. I'm gonna call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Bruce, do you have anything?
I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Christmas is gonna be fantastic at my house, is, and Happy New Year. I hope everybody has a prosperous New Year, and, uh, thank you very much.
Dina?
Yes, um, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. I hope everyone will have a good time, and, uh, don't drink and drive, but have a good time. Um, also, Happy Birthday to Bill and Sandy.
Thank you.
Are you born on the same day?
No, actually, my daughter and my wife were born on the same day, December 22nd, and I, I'd like to think that's why we canceled the council meeting. But, uh, no, I have about, within my family, there's about eight or 10 birthdays in December.
Well, I, um, we had a nine birthday in November.
Wow.
Which is up there along with you. Uh, and, um, just wanna, once again, um, I thought Bruce had a great idea in, in the museum, and I'm supportive of it. It's very, it's a project that could be viable, historic, um, educational, and, um, enhance the understanding of our diversity in the city of Garden Grove. How the largest number of Vietnamese immigrants ended up here in the city of Garden Grove, and make up for 35% of it. And, um, that's all I have to say about that. And remember to shop in Garden Grove. Um, it's the holidays, we're gonna have to spend money. Uh, any of you who are, um, intelligent and cannot afford to buy your kid's toy, there are kids' drives, um, Christmas kids' drives at the social services, especially on Main Place. You can go into social services and ask them when the Christmas toy drive will be, and get coupons for that. Um, I know we have one in Little Saigon every year. I don't know the exact date and time yet. Um, maybe I can have staff post it up, once we have that information onto the, um, website. Um, also, um, that's it, and, uh, don't forget the discount if you shop in Garden Grove.
Thank you. Steve?
Just wanna wish everyone a Happy Holidays, including the mayor and Sandy's birthdays.
Thank you. Andrew?
Likewise, Happy Holidays to everyone, and a Happy Birthday, uh, Mayor. I hope that my vote on the museum project shows that, that I am not, uh, putting political expediency over the merit of this project. Because I think it is a worthwhile project, and it is worth going forward on. But I'm, but we had, I have felt the need to address the process by which, that I see the item being addressed. And I will keep this in mind as I go forward and I deal with, with items in the future. Because I, I feel like there are, at least a perception to me, that there's a double standard going on here. But I, um, I want to adjourn today on a little bit of a sad note. Kenneth Aragon is a Los Angeles Police Department, uh, officer, and is a Garden Grove resident. He passed away tragically on December 3rd, uh, after being involved in a crash while riding his motorcycle home from work. Officer Aragon had been with the LAPD for 19 years, and served as that department's community relations officer in the department's Northeast Division. He was involved, uh, with a youth outreach program that helped at-risk children, and was also head of the Police Athletic League. Officer Aragon is survived by his wife Renee, uh, who, by the way, works with the Orange County Internal Audit Department. So, she is also part of our county family, and is also survived by five children, Jessica, Gabrielle, Alyssa, Adam, and Nathan. So, as we adjourn this meeting, and as we look forward to the holidays, I ask that everyone keep Officer Aragon's family in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just let mention a few quick things. Last week, we had the, uh, the tree lighting in Village Green, and that's something we started about three years ago, after there really wasn't, uh, one that was very inclusive, I think, of all Garden Grove. And, you know, I'm proud to say that I was on that, uh, committee, so to speak, to start that. And, and it's something that, I don't know how many kids were, and adults this year, 25, 3, 500, but a lot of the people that were there are people that we really need to reach during the holidays, and especially at Christmas time. Because I believe a lot of the kids that were there probably were not going to receive very much in the way of gifts on, on Christmas Day. So, it really makes your heart feel warm when you see something like that, and you see that it really takes care of those that it's, it's supposed to. Um, I, you know, this is kinda like the museum. Everybody kinda wants to be a part of everything. And I don't know, maybe we should look at, um, having the whole council involved, and then have open meetings, so it doesn't violate the Brown Act. I, I don't know, maybe there's some other avenues to look at. But I, but everybody has a tendency to wanna be part of it, and for good intentions. I mean, it is something that sounds extremely feasible. We won't know that until we get the information back, and we'll have limited funds, I'm sure. But, uh, there's a little bit of fighting that goes in back and forth, and sometimes that's a good thing. Sometimes at least it, it clarifies some things. Uh, this last weekend, too, we had the Winter Fest at Atlantis, uh, where we bring snow in every year, and the kids had a great time. It was, it was wonderful. We also had something that, uh, happened last week. Joe Hay is the coach for a Garden Grove High School football team. And last week, he was named ABC Seven NFL High School Coach of the Year, which is quite an accomplishment. He had gotten to turn the season Coach of the Week, but he had more letters than, than anybody has had in history, writing, nominating him for this, and they're undefeated. And, and part of the spark that keeps him going is because they did have a young man, Kevin Tellis, who died during the first game. But this is a team, if you hear Coach Hay, a team of destiny. And this coming weekend, they're playing, um, what team is it? La Marada. They're playing La Marada for the CIF Southern Championship. So, we wish them the best of luck. Uh, they, they're men on a mission. And one thing I have to tell you about Coach Hay, as, as I was there when he was awarded the, uh, ABC Channel 7 Award, and, and we also gave him an award. A very humble man, but driven man. And he, he has a philosophy that you very seldom hear coaches. He calls his players student players. They're students first, they're players second, they're athletes second. And he is, is involved in, if anybody needs tutoring, if anybody's having difficulty, they can come to him, and he helps them in that respect, too. And I think we're very proud to have a coach of that nature. And this is his first year coaching a varsity team, and they're undefeated at this point. One more game, and they've got it all. So, we wish him the best of luck. And also, this weekend, we had, we had passed a resolution for the 176th medical group, um, for six of their soldiers, five coming back from Kosovo, and one from, um, one of the other places over there. And, uh, they're over, they were over there for over a year, and they're, they're on a peacekeeping mission. So, they, they bring the best ideals, they try to help the people over there. And you know, they're in, in serious, um, danger anywhere, uh, just like any of our other military. But I wanna thank them for spending the time over there, and for taking care of, of things that have to be done, and for all the military, because they're there every day we need them, and we lose too many of them. So, God bless all of them, and I wanna wish everybody a Merry, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And we'll adjourn the meeting till Tuesday, January 12th, at 5:30 in the council chambers. Thank you.